Adequate notice of this meeting was provided in accordance with Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, Senator Byron M. Baer, Open Publics Meeting Act.
If I salute, you're singing to.
I teach elementary school. I want to sing my country tis the day after every sound. I pledge allegiance.
It is the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Pearson?
Hi there.
Commissioner Musso?
Here.
Mr. Capazola?
Here.
Commissioner Saleo?
Here.
Commissioner Loews?
Here.
Deputy Director Romero?
Here.
Director Albright?
Here.
Do I have a motion and second to accept and dispense with the reading of the minutes from the last public meeting?
Second.
Or so.
All right, the first part of this meeting.
In a letter dated October 25th, 2023, from Atlantic City Electric to the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners enclosing notices of filing and public hearings in the matter of combined and consolidated application of Atlantic City Electric Company to adjust the level of its wider RGGI rate associated with the legacy solar renewable energy certificate financing program, BPU docket number ER 23070464. In a letter dated November 8th, 2023, from Atlantic City Electric to the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners enclosing notices of filing and public hearings in the matter of the Atlantic City Electric Company for implementation of an adjustment to its conservation initiative program rate mechanism and associated customer class rates, BPU docket number ER 23070479.
Hi.
Do I have a motion and second?
Can I have a motion and a second for open, for public comment on resolutions only?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor? Anyone like to come to the podium? You have five minutes to state who you are and where you're from.
Good evening. I'm Nancy Ridgeway from the county of County. I think that's right. On the resolution. On resolution. I turned them upside down. I got five whole minutes. I'll just play up here, okay? I'll make you all laugh for a minute. On resolution 2023-808, there's a resolution authorizing an amendment to the shared service agreement between Cumberland County, Salem County, and the Cumberland County Improvement Authority for planning and implementing a broadband solution for residents of Cumberland and Salem Counties. I read the agreement.
Do you, do you want to comment on it?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Now, I have a problem with something in the agreement, and I read it, and maybe with this agreement, we will end up with a lawsuit. I'm happy about that.
Probably happy too.
So, in the shared service agreement on page 216, in paragraph one of the agreement, it says that Cumberland County shall act as the lead agency in the development and implication of the broadband project now funded and made possible by the National Telecommunications and Information Administration middle mile program and shall be responsible for, and I went to A, ongoing statistic planning to determine the broadband needs of Salem County and Cumberland County with respect to providing affordable, reliable internet connectivity to all residents. Excuse me? Are you going to be in the internet business to provide internet to all residents with this middle mile project?
Do you want to answer, Mr. Ridgeway?
Yes!
No, we're not going to be in the internet business. We're bringing fiber optic dark fiber, which will provide the service for other people to provide that end mile, eventually the end mile. We are going to be eligible for the bead money, which is coming down the pipe. This is just to make sure, this agreement is to make sure, which is really allows, which is not, as you summed up very well, that we don't get sued, that we have an agreement in place with the Salem, ourselves and the CCIA, because we were bound and beholden to the CCIA before we started this project, because they drafted and created this, created this middle mile project. They were the ones that put the original application and, as you know, as you know, we had an agreement for years with the CCIA to all our construction. We no longer have that agreement. It's the last remit of it. So, to sum up that, the mutual agreement has to be made. Is that adequate, Mr. Carr?
Yes, I just think that in A, you should take out "to all residents" and put in "to residents" without making it "all," because it's not going to be "to all residents."
All right.
Oh, yeah, I can get technical.
That's good.
And then at the last meeting at the work session, on resolution 2023-704, this is a resolution authorizing a budget transfer, and when Mr. Ridgeway was talking about it, and this was for the juvenile shared services, and it's for $1.1 million. Mr. Director, I'm sure that you sit on the finance committee, but I was appalled because you act like you were shocked.
All right, this is 794, 794.
Yes.
We authorize a budget transfer?
Yes, at the work session, and Mr. Ridgeway spoke about it. He told you why. You couldn't understand why.
Well, Mr. Ridgeway, do you understand those balance transfers come back from other places?
I, I understand that. I'm talking about you. That you didn't understand that this was for the juveniles when you sit on the finance committee when you should have known before it even got to this meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Ridgeway. Thanks for putting that out to me. Anyone else? All right, see, no one? Can we close the, dial a motion to close the party?
Hello?
Oh, sorry. Just state your name and where you're from, and you have five minutes.
Ms. Pachoni, Hookwell Township?
Ms. Pachoni, go ahead.
Uh, resolution, or, resolution 2023-817, awarding a contract to Tektonic Engineering for $420,453. Is this, is this for site surveying?
No, this, that, no, this is actually awarded, we always promised to have a engineering consultant over our shoulder looking at the project. So, this is that group that is going to be our eyes and ears to tell us what the engineers or what, if we're looking at the project, that they would say, this is being done right or not done right. This is that group. Remember, we also have the grants coordinator, that was what we also promised, to oversight the money. So, that's, so, okay, that's who Tektonics is, the advisor consultant engineer. Go ahead.
What line item in the budget is this in?
It's, it's not in the project.
It's not in the grant project?
It's in the grant, it's, it's in.
The budget?
Well, technically, it was never planned for in the budget, but it's in the budget. It's in, it's going to be out of the grant, the target grant, the whole project of the middle mile it's going to be in. It's not out of our budget, our budget per se.
Ms. Pachoni, at this time, that resolution has been pulled from tonight's agenda.
Ms., Ms. Loews, that.
Okay, it wasn't aware of that. Thank you.
Well, it's going to be cool.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
This was also a new bid contract.
Nope. It actually was bid out, that's actually correct. It was bid out, so, and there were actually three bidders on that.
There were three, there were three bids, Ms. Pachoni.
So, it was not a no big contract.
And we, we would like.
Is that, is that, was that a tacit resolution? Because I didn't see it.
No.
Commissioner Loews was trying to explain to you. Give her a second to, to clear it up for you.
Ms. Pachoni, I think at this time, we wanted to take a little bit more time and reexamine the RFPs. It absolutely was a bid contract that went out to bid, and we still had some questions about it. And as I said, when we originally discussed this issue, I was going to watch it very closely, and at this time, we need to look at that, those RFPs a little closer. So, for tonight, that is pulled off the agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Loews. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Pachoni.
Good night.
Good night.
I, I apologize because I.
When was it pulled?
I, I actually, I decided about 3 o'clock this afternoon to pull it off the agenda because I was going to explain that, why I pulled it off the agenda. And, and I apologize because I hadn't talked to you.
And to be clear, it's on.
It's on the books.
The agendas that are printed. However, the word came in too late to change that, but it is the director's prerogative to update the agenda as he says that. So, that's.
And I, I apologize. I didn't get a chance to speak with you, but I'll tell you why in a little bit. So, Ms. Pachoni, are you, have any more, anything else you want to add? Anyone else? Anyone else on?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, anyone on the, the phone? Okay. Can I have a motion to close the closing session?
So moved. Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. When voting on resolutions, all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and having been reviewed by the Board of County Commissioners will be enacted by one motion. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any commissioner or board member, and if so removed, will be treated as a separate matter. Any items requiring expenditure are supported by certification of availability of funds. Do I have a motion and second to move my consent agenda on resolutions 2023-772 through 2023-816?
Anyone? Anyone want to just make the motion? What's that? What is that?
So, what you can do is vote on them one at a time.
Okay, we'll vote on them one at a time, babe.
Okay.
You have to read them out.
Resolution 2023-772, resolution awarding fair and open professional service contracts for providing as needed architectural and engineering services for the county of Cumberland, RFQ 23-42. Do I have a motion and second? So moved.
So moved.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Loews?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albright?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-773, resolution awarding fair and open professional service contracts for providing as needed general environmental consulting services for the county of Cumberland, RFQ 23-43. Do I have a motion and second? Second.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Loews?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albright?
Yes.
2023-774, resolution authorizing purchase from the New Jersey State contract vendor for provision of social services, phone system support in accordance with New Jersey State Contract 1 NJCP-80802. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second. Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Loews?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albright?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-775, resolution canceling expired grant balances. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second. Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Loews?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albright?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-776, resolution exercising first option to renew contract for providing temperature control and HVAC maintenance service for the Cumberland County buildings. Do I have a motion and second? So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Loews?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albright?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-777, resolution exercising second and final option to renew contract for providing vehicle repair services for the county of Cumberland and the Cumberland County Cooperative Contract Purchasing System identifier number 181CCCPS bid number 21-59. Do I have a motion and second? Second. Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Loews?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albright?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-778, resolution authorizing the award of a non-fair and open contract for providing an employee prescription drug program for the county of Cumberland. Do I have a motion and second? So moved. Second. Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Loews?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albright?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-779, resolution authorizing purchase and installation of seven Baratec brand 100-gallon Kailgate-mounted pre-wet tank providing solution for the Department of Public Works under bid number ESCNJ 23-24-04, contract number 65MCESCCPS. Do I have a motion and second? So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Loews?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albright?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-780, resolution approving change order number two to contract for community support services, older Americans Act services for the elderly and disabled for the 2022-2024 area plan contract, RFP 21-50, for certified home health aid services. Do I have a motion and second? So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Loews?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albright?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-781, resolution exercising first option to renew contract providing various social services for the homeless for the county of Cumberland, Cumberland County Department of Human Services, RFP number 22-63, resubmission two for prevention.
Can you please speed your, your phone?
Case management, security, deposit, utilities, rent and mortgage services. Do I have a motion and second? So moved. Second. Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Loews?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albright?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-782, resolution exercising first option to renew contract for providing various social services for the homeless for the county of Cumberland, Cumberland County Department of Human Services, RFP number 22-63. Do I have a motion and second? So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Loews?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albright?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-783, resolution exercising first option to renew contract for providing juvenile crisis shelter bed services for the Cumberland County Human Services Advisory Council, RFP number 22-64. Do I have a motion and second? So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso? Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Loews?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albright?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-784, resolution exercising first and final option to renew contract for supplying and delivering office furniture and electronics equipments for the county of Cumberland and the Cumberland County Cooperative Contract Purchasing System identifier number 181-CCCCPS bid number 21-55. Do I have a motion and second? So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Loews?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albright?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-785, resolution exercising second and final option to renew contract for providing community support services, older Americans Act services for the elderly and disabled for the 2022 through 2024 area plan contract, RFP number 21-5, resubmission two. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved. Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner, uh, Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Loews?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albright?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-786, resolution exercising second and final option to renew contract for providing community support services, older American, Americans Act services for the elderly and disabled for the 2022-2024 area plan contract, RFP number 21-50. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second. Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Loews?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albright?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-787, resolution approving budget amendment FFY 2021 VOCA-SARTFNE program VS 106-21, $125,810. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second. Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Loews?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albright?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-788, resolution approving budget amendment Vinland JAG-2023BJA-FY23 Edward, Edward Byron M., Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program, $7,725. Do I have a motion and second? So moved. Second. Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Loews?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albright?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-789, resolution amending resolution 2023-565, resolution acknowledging submission of a grant application and authorizing execution of a grant agreement with the Juvenile Justice Commission for the 2024 Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative Innovation Funding. Do I have a motion and second? So moved. Second. Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Loews?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albright?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-790, resolution authorizing approval to submit grant application and execute a grant contract with the New Jersey Department of Transportation, VCR 640, over Canhansi River Structural Replacement Project. Do I have a motion and second?
Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Abstain.
Mr. Loews?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albright?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-791, resolution exercising first option to renew contract for providing temperature control and HVAC maintenance services for the Cumberland County buildings, bid number 21-34. Do I have a motion and second? So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Loews?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albright?
Yes.
Resolution 7, 2023-792, resolution exercising first option to renew contract for providing cleaning services for the Cumberland County Division of Social Services, bid number 22-65. Do I have a motion and second? So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Loews?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albright?
No.
Resolution 2023-793, resolution approving change order number one to contract for specifications for 2022 overlay program, townships of Commercial, Down, Greenwich, Hookwell, Lawrence, Marsh River, Stowe Creek and Upper Deerfield, Cumberland County, New Jersey, bid number 22-16. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second. Second. Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Loews?[1627.84]
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
Resolution 2023 dash 794, resolution authorizing budget transfer 2023 dash 01. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved. Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Musso.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
Resolution 2023 dash 795, resolution exercising first option to renew contract for providing various social services for the homeless for the County of Cumberland, Cumberland County Department of Human Services, RFP number 22 dash 63. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Musso.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
Resolution 2023 dash 796, resolution canceling expired contracts for November 2023 covering materials, services and supplies. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Musso.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yeah.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
Resolution 2023 dash 797, resolution authorizing purchases from state contract vendors. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved. Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Musso.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
Resolution 2023 dash 798, resolution approving change order number one to contract for FY 2021, Federal Road Program Cities of Millville and Vineland, Cumberland County, New Jersey, bid number 21 dash 45. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Musso.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Abstained.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
Resolution 2023 dash 799, resolution authorizing the award of a non-fair and open contract for providing a retiree Medicare Advantage Plan for the Cumberland County, for the County of Cumberland. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Musso.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
Resolution 2023 dash 800, resolution authorizing the award of a non-fair and open contract for providing software maintenance agreement with Edmunds GovTech Incorporated for providing software support and maintenance services for the Edmunds and Associates MCSJ software system for the County of Cumberland. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second. Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Musso.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
Resolution 2023 dash 801, resolution authorizing purchase from the New Jersey State Contract Vendor for Vigilant Brand Automatic License Plate Readers with Extended Hardware Warranty for the Cumberland County Prosecutor's Office and Sheriff's Office. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Musso.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
Resolution 2023 dash 802, resolution authorizing a shared service agreement with the City of Vineland concerning COVID-Luwarmin Shelters. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Musso.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
Resolution 2023 dash 803, resolution authorizing a shared service agreement with the City of Millville concerning COVID-Luwarmin Shelters. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Musso.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
So moved.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
Resolution 2023 dash 804, resolution authorizing a shared service agreement with the City of Bridgeton concerning COVID-Luwarmin Shelters. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Musso.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
Resolution 2023 dash 805, resolution authorizing increase of monetary ceiling for legal expenses for legal services provided to the Board of Health. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved. Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Musso.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
Resolution 2023 dash 806, resolution authorizing increase of monetary ceiling for legal expenses in the litigation matter of Brown, Clark et al. versus Charles Moore in U.S. District Court, docket number 1 colon 20 dash CD dash 7907. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Stingy.
Commissioner Musso.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Deputy Director.
Mr. Carr, before, Mr. Carr, before we, could you give us just to tell people where we're at with that real quickly and kind of, are we getting near the end to this one?
Yeah, so I did receive a call from outside of council on this matter, and I'm told that this matter is, so we are waiting a motion before federal Judge Hillman to accept this settlement, or to settle in principle between the courts.
This has been a long, as ever, a lot of people here on the stage, it's been a long, ongoing, frustrating, frustrating case, but we've done, this commission has gone, done above and beyond, straightened out many parts of this situation, and being Judge Hillman a more of an advocate for us than working with our counsel and working with our, working together, come up with a settlement, which is actually a good thing, very good thing. So, yes.
Resolution 2023 dash 807, resolution authorizing amendment to the shared service agreement between Cumberland County and Salem County for Combined Sexual Assault Response Team. Do I have a motion in second?
Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Musso.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
Resolution 2023 dash 808, resolution authorizing an addendum to the shared service agreement between Cumberland County, Salem County, and the Cumberland County Improvement Authority for planning and implementing, implementing a broadband solution for residents of Cumberland County and Salem Counties. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Musso.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Before you vote, Mr. Saleo, they, just so you know, that we would have to do this anyway, no matter if it was transferred to the next group or not, this is one step that has to be done. They are part of it, even though we don't really agree with it.
I understand.
Okay, good, thank you.
The answer is yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
Resolution 2023 dash 809, resolution acknowledging continued participation in the Southern Coastal Regional Income Benefits Fund for 2024 medical benefits. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Musso.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
Resolution 2023 dash 810, resolution amending resolution 2022 dash 228, authorizing a contract for providing COVID testing services for the Cumberland County Department of Corrections. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second. Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Musso.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
Resolution 2023 dash 811, resolution authorizing increase of monetary ceiling for legal expenses, expenses for legal services provided to the Cumberland County Planning Board. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved. Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Musso.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
Resolution 2023 dash 812, resolution authorizing assignment of all contract negotiations involving PBA 299S to the firm of Lee, Donahue and Weinberg. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Musso.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
Resolution 2023 dash 813, resolution appointing and reappointing members of the Construction Board of Appeals. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Musso.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
Resolution 2023 dash 814, resolution appointing member of the Library of Commissioners. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Musso.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
Resolution 2023 dash 815, resolution appointing member of the Youth Services Advisory Council. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Musso.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
Resolution 2023 dash 816, resolution authorizing payment of bills. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved. Second.[1108.54]
And burned us with the next year with that, with those choices and decisions. I do appreciate my colleagues on the left of me because they're very supportive of this project. I believe that as we get into the details of the next step, because we are approving an advisory consultant, which we requested, to give us their opinion, their expert opinion on the engineers are going to design the system. There was some very good discussions with them, and we did approve one. The group decided on one particular consultant engineer, advisor engineer. But I think that should be the debate of the next board that comes in, decide if they want to engage that group, or at least hear what they had to say, which was very positive, that they believe the project is well-funded, it can be done on time. There's members on this board who will be sitting on the next board that don't agree with this, and they should be able to hear that opinion, or at least hear what this advisor consultant, who will be, if they've chosen, accepted, be able to tell them in their own words what I just said relate to you. So to rush it through and then have issues, I thought about it, decided that that was not the way it should be done. Let the next board decide if they're going to continue the middle mile, the middle mile, and then receive the B-buddy and get this thing done. There's a communication problem in this county. I believe this is the way to solve it, but that would be my job to talk about it in the next commissioner board. So that's why.
So, let me be clear.
Go ahead.
Let me be clear. We have been meeting with Salem, we have been eyes with this, people have sat on committees, people have expressed their support for this across the board. So now, we need to think about it a little more. And just, just to say it for what it is, I think that this county is not going to be brought here. And I think if this board did not pass it, it's not going to happen. What concerns me, and I know how you feel about it, and I know that must have been very tough that you would have to make that statement, and I'm going to say that. But this county needs broadband, they don't need the politics. And I'm very upset at this. I cannot understand $23 million plus 30, plus the opportunity for people in this county to get brought into the 21st century, everyone being able to compete. And there's a problem with that because somebody's got something somewhere that they don't want to lose. That's why things don't get done in this county. This is exactly why things don't get done.
Well, I appreciate.
So now, let me have the floor, let me have the floor now. Because we sat on this, we worked on this, we invested in this, we went out to the community on this, the people were supportive of this.
Everybody wants.
Everybody wants improved broadband. I'm tired of going two blocks from my house and cannot get service. People are tired of that. How are the hospitals to do consulting if they can't get service? I get this, you want to hold it off and think about it a little more, but I think everybody in here knows that if this is put off till next month, it's not going to happen.
I see the wings going on in between people in here. It's not going to happen.
Thank you. It's not going to happen. So let the people know straight up.
Well, actually, I have to have some faith in our next board, as we're talking, that they will actually look at this and have the time to study it like we have, and they will make a decision. And for the good of it, if they decide to do it, there'll be other votes that have to be taken. Even if this is voted, there will be other places that it could be stopped, and if they're not behind it, they'll do that.
And it'll be stopped.
It'll be stopped.
Well, I understand.
I think you're being the director now, and you're doing the right thing. This is what the director is supposed to do. You have to walk that middle mile. But there are those members on this board who see it completely different, and who get it, and understand exactly what this is about and what's going to happen. And I appreciate all the effort that you've put in trying to make this happen, and I'm saying that for the record. And I also appreciate the fact that you have to fight the bully, and do what you have to do. And I'm done.
Director, real quick, because I've been on those subcommittee meetings, Salem County Commissioner Mickey and Courtney Taylor's been on those, have they been notified?
No, they haven't been notified, because this is a kind of a, no, they have not. And actually, that's not.
Are we going to make the courtesy call?
Yeah, I will make the courtesy call, and we're going to put it off two months to allow the new board to look at it and decide, or take more time if they have to decide. The goal, my goal was to keep it on, which I talked to our people, to keep it on track, to do step-by-step, keep within the timeframe and budget, and we were doing that. We were actually, we were getting praised because we were actually right on time. By the NTAIA, the federal people were calling, call us every, twice a week or whenever they call us to find out that Cumberland, they didn't have to worry when we were asking for extensions or different things. And I say extensions, the environmental component, they allowed us the extension because they knew we were right on track with what we had to do. This was to get the advisory consultant, which we, is actually an extra thing that we agreed upon because we wanted input, so we knew exactly what we were seeing, to get an expert's opinion of what the designer and the engineers and the construction for CCIA, we'd have someone over their shoulder giving us their expert opinion, and I thought we chose a pretty good one. But again, the next board will decide if it's the right course. I'll say I agree with Mr. Pearson, that the, we have communication issues in this county, and I believe this was the way to go. We had a congressman that actually was pushing it. We were actually going to be able to beat the end user, which is one of the biggest complaints, because the B-buddy has come into us, because we're on track, we're going to be the state poster child probably for the B-buddy, and you need the middle mile to make the B work. So the middle mile was going to, and the best thing about it is that everyone we had, every consultant we had in the room goes, how many customers they could figure that they could get involved in this? They were already calculating how many they could get, because that was another big issue, there would be no customers. There were plenty of customers. We even got a call, or we reached out to one of the biggest providers that told us that they would actually take the risk away from the county. I'm saying this right, Mr. Johnson, they would take the risk from the county because they had a hole in their system. The hole was Salem and Cumberland, and we were going to fill that hole. So they would actually take us out to use our $10 billion to do it, or $14 billion to do it, and they were going to take us out and do, they would do that, they would take that. But if they were willing to do that, what value this would give to this county? And they, and I believed we should control the destiny of that system to, and I always thought this would actually make money for the county, pay us back more than enough, and along with the B-buddy, get to the end user. But with that said, you got to have, we have to have a broad support, support for our future. We had a change, we had a big change of our commission, and those members have the right, and should have the right to determine for the next two years where we're going to go with this project. So, just as if I was sitting here on the same thing.
So Salem County Commissioners didn't know, but so what I'm going to also suggest is because Courtney Taylor, Commissioner Taylor from Salem County, very knowledgeable on IT, and on our meetings, he's always brought up a lot, I would suggest that the three new commissioners sit with him, and he can catch them up, if I'm sure they're not.
That's a good suggestion.
Yeah, because he can, you know.
He can explain what he sees.
He's the way, he sees it and all that. And it is a shame, because after we had this move, I mean, especially, you know, the western side of the county, so many people were just excited because finally we were going to have, you know, broadband internet where we did not have that prior, especially during COVID, a lot of kids struggled, I said it before. So a lot of western sides, they're excited, even some of the cities that came up to make, you know, I know we had a lot of people come to the meeting at Tech and was against it, but most of those people were out of town people. We need to worry about everybody in our own county.
Townspeople have something they mean from it.
So what's going to happen is those people now are going to be very upset if this does not go through, and I'm sure there'll be a big voice for next year, which I'll be there for myself.
So that, if anybody has any questions why, you can go to the podium, but basically, if a commissioner has any questions why, that's cool, that's the explanation, and that's why I decided to do that, and thought for the best for the future is the middle mile to be discussed and understood. Okay.
Resolution 2023-818, resolution awarding contract for providing urine and oral drug screening services and onsite testing supplies for the Cumberland County Alcohol Drug Abuse Services Office and the Cumberland County Department of Corrections, bid number 23-25. Do I have a motion in second? Second?
Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albrecht?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-818, resolution awarding contract for supplying and delivering miscellaneous medical supplies to Cumberland County, bid number 23-44. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albrecht?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-821, resolution awarding contract for providing water treatment services for the County of Cumberland, bid number 23-48. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
I was just notified that somebody's online, wanting to ask a question, but I'm going to do the vote first. Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albrecht?
Given that there's a public comment period at the end of the year.
Resolution 2023-822, resolution awarding contract for providing transportation services for the adolescent clients for the Cumberland County Alcoholism and Drug Abuse Services Office, bid number 23-47. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albrecht?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-823, resolution awarding a contract for providing cost accountant consultant services for the County of Cumberland, RFP number 23-50. Do I have a motion in second? Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albrecht?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-824, resolution exercising option to renew contract for providing various social services for the homeless for the County of Cumberland, Cumberland County Department of Human Services, RFP number 22-63. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
I'm going to, because of a conflict for any organization, but I have a conflict, so I have to speak.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albrecht?
Yes.
We have someone online, and we're going to ask you to unmute when we have to. So this is, I'm going to unmute. Resolution 2023-825, resolution authorizing purchase from New Jersey State Contract Vendor for network APS portable radios and accessories for the prosecutor's office. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved. Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albrecht?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-826, resolution authorizing the award of a non-fair and open contract for software maintenance agreement and annual technical support for route man software for the Cumberland County Area Transit System Program Routing Scheduling System. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albrecht?
Just a comment, this, we are right down in the, while we're doing it, the synergy against the CATS program and the workforce development bus system. With this program, I'm sure that it'll give us a chance to grow even more with our bus systems to help provide more transportation through the county. It's the beginning of kind of putting the system together, we already have successful programs, but putting it together helps us route more, maybe around the county a little better, maybe eventually more buses to start a bus system around the county to handle our transportation needs, which is a lot. Yes.
Resolution 2023-827, resolution authorizing payment of services to the Center for Family Services pursuant to a grant award to the Center for Family Services at the Cumberland County Prosecutor's Office. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albrecht?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-828, resolution authorizing approval to submit a grant application for the FY 2024 State and Local Cybersecurity Grant Programs. Do I need a motion in second? I need a motion in second.
A lot of reading tonight there.
Who makes the motion in the morning? Have to keep them lively. Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso? Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albrecht?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-829, resolution awarding professional service contract for providing occupational health services for the County of Cumberland. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albrecht?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-830, resolution declaring surplus in unneeded property no longer needed by the Office of Emergency Management and authorizing transfer to the Township of Lawrence. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albrecht?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-831, resolution authorizing application to a grant contract with the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs for the FY 2024 Small Cities Program Public Facilities Fund for ADA improvements at the Cumberland County Fairgrounds. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albrecht?
Yes, with a comment that this is helping us do these stands to make the ADA compliant, which is another piece of the puzzle of our park system, to keep improving, keep looking for money to upgrade our, this is the fairgrounds, the middle park, but we have other things covered, and we'll continue to look for those resources to keep growing this system. So, thank you.
Resolution 2023-832, resolution identifying the CDVG Fair Housing Officer for the FY 2024 Small Cities Program Public Facilities Fund Application for ADA Improvements at the Cumberland County Fairgrounds. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albrecht?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-833, resolution adopting a grant management plan for the FY 2024 Small Cities Program Public Facilities Fund Application for ADA improvements at the Cumberland County Fairgrounds. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albrecht?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-834, resolution adopting a citizen participation plan for the FY 2024 Small Cities Program Public Facilities Fund Application for ADA improvements at the Cumberland County Fairgrounds. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albrecht?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-835, resolution bidding to the competitive contracting procurement process pursuant to NJSA 40A-11.4.1 through 40A:11-4.5 for certain professional services contingent upon an FY 2024 Small Cities Program Public Facilities Fund Grant Award from the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs for the Americans with Disabilities Act, compliant improvements at the Cumberland County Fairgrounds. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albrecht?
Yes.
The treasured report for the months of October and November will be given at the December 19, 2023 meeting of the board. Do I have a motion in second for authorizing payment of salaries and wages?
So moved.
Second.
Voice vote.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we've, from the public comment already.
I need a motion in second to open.
Motion in second over the public. All favor?
Aye.
Anyone who'd like to come and have any new, anything new they'd like to present, or any comments they'd like to make? I think we do have somebody on the.
They left.
They left?
Mm-hmm.
Welcome to call back.
They quit a hunk.
Anyone to state your date and where you're from, and you have five minutes.
Sandy Aceavito of Upper Deerfield Township on the broadband issue. Well, I guess it's official. Decisions made by this board that affect the welfare of the residents of this county are really being made as to not hurt the feelings of incoming commissioners? Do you hear yourselves? Do you hear yourselves? This is real life that you guys are being charged with, so I think you need to step your game up.
Is there anybody?
Good evening. I'm Nancy Bridgeway from Upper Deerfield, Deerfield Township. A couple of meetings ago, it stated that we might be going into a shared service agreement with Salem County for our corrections and what's going on with the jail. You know, we've been here for a year, and this is the 11th month, and we don't have a new jail, we're still forming our prisoners out. The director, a couple, I guess a month ago, said that he talked to Salem County, they were willing to put an addition in with our jail to take our incarcerated people there, and I haven't heard anything else about it. And what's going on?
Press trip, I'll tell you.
He'll tell me, I'd love to hear you tell me.
I know, because anytime I like, you make a comment. So the bottom line is that we did have a meeting, and actually, next meeting will have a MOU being presented that will have, it'll have two things, so this is what slowed it down, is that it will have Cumberland Salem, which is what we agree, we're agree, but they also have another partner, and that's Gloucester. Gloucester fills mostly their jail, and Gloucester has an agreement with them until May 31st. Now, so you'll actually see two MOUs being presented, one with just Cumberland Salem, and one with Cumberland Salem with Gloucester. And Cumberland Salem Gloucester, because Gloucester decided if they want to be part of this or not. They, right now, Salem, we have moved, well, I don't know if we've moved any, but we've got very few inmates who've moved over to Salem Jail, we're working on something right now, but we can't move in there if Gloucester's got most of the spaces. During the meeting, I stressed to them that we have no time, we have no, we don't have the luxury of time to wait to see what Gloucester wants to do, but we had the meeting, Salem asked for the meeting to have Gloucester in the room, I was there, they're deciding, and actually, during that meeting, they were debating to see if they could move some of their women out, and then get this ball rolling. So we are proceeding with them or without them, and next two weeks from now, we will have that on our table. So I'm hoping that Gloucester's with us, making it a lot easier, the numbers, everybody likes the numbers, the numbers work for us, it's nothing doubt upfront, which is even better, it's over time, which makes it even easier for us, and we would have a jail with Salem County. So I can only take it as their word until that's signed, and we sign off on it. So it is coming. So to answer your question, it's coming. And let me say this, it's been, yes, we have taken our time, because this has not been easy. We've done all the things, and you just saw a lawsuit, and we finished because we've been trying to do things right, and we've gotten to this point, we have these hurdles come to us, we learned to overcome them and adapt to them, and we're still doing that. I love to say to you that I have a signed agreement in my head, I don't have that yet. I love to say that our prisoners in Salem County, and we, and our jail in Salem is not up in Hudson County, two and a half, two and a half hours away, five hours, round trip. I love to say that, I can't say that yet. But the one thing I do, if this deal comes down, Cumberland being winner, and so will we Salem. Now, I do caution one thing, is that we just, we are supporters of the middle mile with them. And they are, they are supporters of it, big time. They, they had not expressed, they've expressed a little bit, that they're concerned. But I can't, I didn't do it for Cumberland, for Salem, I did it for Cumberland, for us to decide. And, but it is a big deal with them, because they see the need for it, and you already know how I feel. So it does go hand in hand. And I'll go even further. There's many instances now, Cumberland Salem is working together, sharing stuff. I do want to correct, the jail is not a shared service. It's a partnership. That's the difference. It's a forty-year partnership, and we're in it. If it's, if we all agree, we all side off. So it will not be a short-term solution. It will not be a five-year solution. It's a forty-year solution to the problem.
Commissioner Aubrey, find us a question?
Sure.
I believe at the last regular session meeting is when you made the announcement that we would be partnering with Salem County for the jail.
Yes.
And to the point of Ms. Bridgeway's question, is it now that it includes, that announcement was just that it was Cumberland and Salem? Is that agreement now being amended to include Gloucester?
That's, the MOU is going to be a two, you're both, you're all going to see it, that it's going to have two MOUs, which I stated Salem, Cumberland. It'll make it eas, well, it makes it, the three being involved makes it easier, because the court system involves Gloucester, Salem, and Cumberland. And we're all together, it makes the court system more efficient. To the point, even we probably, the last thing is that we even have, and it's been suggested, a courtroom in the, in, in the. Jail. Jail. But if we had it in the jail, we'd not even save our seventeen billion dollars, build it onto our courthouse, if we had one, another courtroom, the newest courtroom in the jail. So that's, that's why it's so important. If it happens, it happens. But I stress to them that we can't wait. We, they gotta, they gotta decide, and in the meeting.
Who is they? Is it Salem or Gloucester?
Gloucester's got to decide.
Gloucester, so is, is this now pushing our progress back, that we've now introduced another?
Yes.
Partner?
We need to introduce a Salem.
Salem introduced them, okay.
It's not Cumberland that's pushing this, it's Salem that's pushing it. And since they have their inmates that agree with Gloucester, we have to hesitate them. We have to work with them, so.
Hopefully this middle mile thing doesn't waste all those meetings you've had. We'll see what happens with that.
Well, I hope not, so.
Oh, we'll see.
And the next board decides, so.
Everybody's got to live with their decisions, right?
So, so I hope I answered your question, Ms. Bridgeway.
I have another one, but you're taking your time. Everybody keeping time, you know, you're doing all the talking.
I stopped.
Thank you.
Stopped your pocket, restarted.
A few months ago, we were spending a lot of money on our jail here in the county to try to bring our prisoners back here. Are we still doing that?
Yes, we are.
It was bringing it up to code.
We're painting the inside of the building.
Painting. Fixing locks. Painting HVAC system, cleaning bowl duct. Making a livable system so we don't get sued again. And, and it won't go for that, because we're still going to have to use that facility for a little bit while we're building the new wig, if we do, build the new wig onto Salem County's jail.
So we? We in the county, coming here?
Yes. Cumberland County. It's a partnership, not a shared service, a partnership.
So we're going to build in somebody else's county with our tax dollars?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to clarify.
I, I know.
I just want to clarify, just want everybody to know what's going on. What did you just say to me?
I said the innuendo sucks, that's what I said.
Seriously?
Yes. Is there five minutes left?
No.
Okay.
Oh, did I hurt your feelings? Oh, I'm so sorry, honey.
Okay, anyone else? Anyone on the phone system? Okay, could I have a, do we have a?
Motion second?
I'll make a motion to close to public.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have any?
Commissioner reports.
Commissioner reports, I want to start.
Actually, I'll start, because I want to say something that kind of hit home with me. I don't know if, if anyone's heard what's going around. There's like a, a dog illness, a respiratory illness, that's going around. It's in a bunch of states. And it actually hit my house, my dog. Out of nowhere started like coughing up. I'll save you the, the details. But if you notice your dog is coughing, get your dog to the, or animal, it could be a cat, I guess, to, to an emergency room or a doctor right away, because it's fatal. It's, I just actually got it.
It's not kennel cough, because I remember.
It's not kennel cough, and, and it's not, my dog's not around other animals. I take my dog for, the only contact he has with other animals is going on a walk and, you know, sniffing here and there. But besides that, like, the, the doctors at the animal hospital, Mount Laurel, told me that they're being inundated, and it just, my dog's a healthy dog, and out of nowhere, ten thousand dollars later, thank, he's, he's okay. But I, I'm wishing I had pet insurance right about now, so. And it happened in an hour. And he went from laying on the couch, running around side to coughing up blood. So if you see that in your animals, just a little word to the wise. And I just got an alert on my phone, somebody, you know, they're passing, they're starting to like pass it around. Different states. Maybe we should.
Okay, pass the word.
Our new, our new website, pass the word message. There you go.
Last question, would you like to put the word out about that? No?
For our health, actually.
For our health?
For our health is probably possible.
Yeah, the board health would be more appropriate.
Okay. Joe, do you take care of it?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, the, the, anything else you'd like, Commissioner?
Yeah, I mean, just to, to keep piggybacking off what we're talking about. I really hope that people don't worry about what other people want. Really look at what's going on in our county when it comes to our middle mile, our, our cell phone coverage, our internet coverage. And really ask yourself, what's, what are we, what else are we going to do? If we don't do this, if it doesn't end up happening with the, with the next group that comes in here, what's the alternative? We're just going to, the status quo, it's not working. So hopefully, you know, heads prevail here.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Um, I, I, I would like to just express my concern about the, the movement with the jail moving forward. I think that we made a lot of progress, and I, so much so that we made that announcement. And I hope that Salem County can come to that resolution with Gloucester, because I don't want to see it impending the progress that we've made here in Cumberland County that, as you have said many times, we so desperately need. That was, that's the bad, the negative side of the point. The positive side of the point is that I am pleased to see how many grants that we have coming in to supporting our fairgrounds and supporting our parks and recreation. We've made tremendous progress with that, and it's all part of the pieces that are very developed, but I think it's going to be a very special project in the future. And also, we've been moving forward with our subcommittee as well, to make sure that 4H, our fairgrounds committee, and our rec committee, that everybody's going to be utilizing that space, sort of has some input, so that we come out with a product that really works for everybody. So I'm happy to see the progress on that. And then I would like to ask for just a moment of silence. Our county lost two very special people this month. Cindy Hutzle, who had a number of years in 4H, and gave so much to our county, as well as Pastor Kenyon, who served as chaplain to the police and fire in Millville for, I believe, since nineteen seventy-eight. So if we could just have a moment of silence for them, I think they really gave a lot to our county, and I appreciate her service.
Thanks. Russo, would you like, Commissioner Russo?
Russo.
Russo. I have Russo, but it was Russo.
Just, I just want to say thank you to the Sheriff's Department. Last month, they did the triad at the Millville Elks, and they had close to two hundred people. And the Sheriff's Department, they cooked at the Millville Elks for everybody. It was like a whole Thanksgiving dinner for them. So it was nice to see everybody out, all the seniors and all the Sheriff's Department there. So I just want to make sure that they're acknowledged, because, you know, they're the ones that provide the food. They all have it catered and everything. They cook everything, they serve everything, and they clean up everything. So just want to say great job to everybody for doing that.
Thanks. Commissioner Saleo?
Uh, yes, I'd like to congratulate the administration on, first of all, helping the entire commission look at litigation during the course of the year. That helped us solve a lot of problems. We have several litigators who helped us with our union contracts with litigation, which was extremely timely, Austin Callister to the county. We put an end to those, some of those situations now. Also, I want to congratulate the new candidates elect, who will be coming in January. I think that the presumption that they are not going to think on their own is somewhat insulting to them. I think that any new group of candidates with fresh minds is something important to the county to move forward. So with that assumption that they'll make a proper decision, just like we've been making good decisions through the entire year. So that's what I want to say, thank you.
Thanks. Commissioner Pearson?
Well, first of all, I would like to add an additional comment on the middle mile. And what I'd like to do is really thank all of those people in the community, all those people throughout this county and in Salem, who reached out to us, who attended the meetings, who expressed support. And I want to say, don't be discouraged. It's very disheartening to put a lot of work and trust in a system that you believe works for everyone. And that we live in a democracy where if you just do the right thing, sometimes good things happen. And I want to tell those folks, don't give up. Don't give up. Just understand that things happen just the way they do, and through no fault of yours, because everyone did what they needed to do. Just sometimes those wheels turn the way they're going to turn, but you never give up. Never give up and never stop fighting for the things that you know your community needs, that you know you need. And never say no. Never say no, I'm going to sit down and not push back. That's one thing. The second thing is that, living around the Christmas.
Okay.
That after the Bridgeton Parade, there's going to be a Season of Remembrance Capital Recovery Center. On December ninth, from three to five, we'll be making Christmas ornaments for anyone who has lost a loved one through any kind of drug, alcohol, et cetera. They're making personalized ornaments for those individuals. You can pick them up at seventy-two North Pearl Street, and you can call the recovery center to register, register that person's name. I think that's always a good way to remember those who will not be here for another season, will not be here for another time, and it supports a very good cause. This is a wonderful program at that recovery center. They do so much for people who are in need, and I just hope that you all will be able to support that. But once again, just thank you to all of those individuals who put all the time and effort into getting all the work done in this county. It's a lot of work, a lot of reading. It's a lot of work, and I don't think people really appreciate what the staff does for the people in this county. And my time is short on this board, and I do want to say thank you for that, and for all the support the staff has given to all of our projects, all of our communities, all of our committees. You pick up the phone and call, they take care of business, even, even Hal Johnson. He even answers your calls, so I just wanted to say that before I close out. But I hope this middle mile project will not be dropped, and I hope that the people of this county will eventually have the broadband service that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Director, real quick, because I forgot something.
That's fine.
Just to let everybody know, Vinland Rotary does a reef something for Remembrance, which is December ninth at our Cumberland County Veterans Cemetery. So it's open to the public. What they do is they put.
Thank you, Carol. I forgot about them.
I did, until she said that, because we talked about today. It's, it starts at nine AM, so what they do at nine AM, they put, they take all the reefs out. Cumberland County Public Works helps a lot. They store everything. They store everything for us, and we appreciate that. But what we do is we take the reefs, we put those on the reefs, and then we place on every veterans, we say, that up prior. And then, so just a reminder, it's December ninth at nine AM.
That's at the Veteran Cemetery.
It's at the Veteran Cemetery, yes.
It's a Saturday.
It's a Saturday, yeah. And we also get the tech kids, the Rotary kids, get involved to help us to.
Also, just, just remind you to, your General Satafield is going to be there as a guest speaker.
Commissioner?
Right, hello. Well, we're coming to the end of the year, and, you know, we had a Millville Parade and the Diner Parade. I'd like to thank Omari Williams and Lou, who are doing a great job. They, they helped us make it successful. I mean, we, we, we were there both nights. It was cold, but it was, it was very nice. We gave out, we gave out a lot of candy, I mean, a lot of candy. Buckets and buckets and buckets. I think out of my car, we gave out like five at one, one parade, and the other one was like seventy buckets of hot candy.
Did you miss through your shoulder, I think?
Yes, I learned how to do a hook job, and, you know, it was a great time. And Omari did a great job, and so did Lou in making it happen. And this is where we all come together and, and work, and we get results. And, and hopefully, we have a great year. I wish every one of you a great year, and hopefully, we can work together and, and it can be, bring some success out of this. I also like to, I'm looking forward to working with the new candidates that elected in a positive way. As far as the middle mile, I, I promised myself I would not talk about it. But, but, you know, we always talked about listening to a consultant, an expert to come in on this and, and advise us. Because we're not all experts. Even though I come here and I said I've been fifteen years in the cable business and it's not going to work, I still wanted an opinion on the broadband. And that's something that was never done. Now the new people will have a chance to look at it and make an honest decision. And I think that's going to be a, a, a great move for this county. I mean, we are talking, yes, they are giving us twenty-four million, and yes, we got to put ten million. And, and, and that's a lot of money for taxpayers. There was a lot of negative when we started, there was a lot of positive. So I think it's a great thing that it's going to give us a little more time to put things together, and hopefully, we can make a decision that satisfies everybody. And, and, and I think we'll make the right decision. You know, not that we make the wrong decision, I'm just saying a consultant, an expert will help us get through this. So I thank everybody, and, and we look forward to having a, a great year. We're no longer twenty-one and less, so that's the bright side. You know, we, you know, I, because of you guys, you know, you made us better. And, and, and that's what I'm looking into, like, doing better. I mean, listening to, to you ladies come up every, every, yeah, it takes a lot, two meetings every, every month. Ms. Bridgeway, Mrs. Aceavito, and all your supervisors, I mean, they come along and support us. And, and, and it's, it's a great thing. Madam Prosecutor, I will need to. So, so, you know, it's, it's, it's been a tough year, but we are making progress, and that's what I want to see. So I'll thank you all.
Okay, a couple of things. You guys all have to keep this under your hat, because it's actually tomorrow, is that we are going to receive a National Roadway Safety Award. SJ, S, the Bioware Initiative, South Jersey Transportation Planning Organization, which Cumberland County is receiving a national award, but set it for their. Matt, you want to describe the project a little bit, just real quick? And, and it's a secret until tomorrow, so they.
Right. Plenty more, and you go to the start.
The secret is out.
The secret is out.
So the project was the Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Plan that looked at certain roads in Millville, Bridgeton, and Vinland. And that was facilitated by the South Jersey Transportation Planning Organization. Cumberland assisted with the city's involvement. And it's actually, it's going to be two awards. There's the national award that the Commissioner Director mentioned, and then there's also, we received a state planning award through the New Jersey chapter of the American Planning Association. That project identified specific roads that need some assistance in building pedestrian bicycle safety. And SJ TPO just authorized a contract for a consultant to move the, move the, the concept into design. So the consultant will be looking at those specific roadways and coming up with specific recommendations and implementation plans to actually have the work done. So it's a multi-phased approach, it will be continuing in twenty-four. But we're really, really happy that the awards highlighted the work.
So state is recognizing Cumberland County, and so is the nation, the Senate, and our national is recognizing Cumberland County, which is pretty nice to say. So I don't know if it's secret at the state, but it was supposed to be secret at the federal government, so.
It was not secret at the state, but yeah, the national.
That's good, so. Next thing, I attended.
Nice, nice job.
It is nice. Commissioner Rhodes and I attended the South Jersey Association of County Meeting of Brolly, Brolly County. And one thing, which was very nice, Brolly County's first time hosted it, and we went up there. One of the big things they were presenting was their park system, and the many facets that they are doing with their system, which they have a very diverse county, because it's a river to river to ocean. And many of the things, I guess we get some good ideas from them, was we're plenty of ours, many similar things that we kind of focus it on, they focus it on. So it's kind of neat to see that we're, we're proceeding their way ahead of us, but like, we're going to start somewhere we did, we are starting, so. Also, just to point out, this is just, I'll just say that, we, we have people interested in the county, and a, just, I'll be vague a little bit, but there's a, Moore River Township is on the map, a company outside the state actually looking at a, a major parcel in Moore River County, not, well, Moore River Township. And one of the big things that they presented was that it's a, it's a farm, not a campus thing, it's a farm, a high-tech farm. It also could hire foreigner people, which we'll, we'll find them. And, but also with, it'll also include a data center, which precedes part of our middle mile, needs data center connections. Here's somebody that's, I guess, I don't know how they got here, but they got here. Over two hundred acres, so, and we're working with them. We, all our assets went to work, to go out to meet them, to tell them, to talk to them, to figure out how we do it. But it bodes well, Moore River Township is having someone that size looking at it, so. Any update on the red, the design?
Yes, I'm holding off on details.
Okay. But it's proceeding.
Right next month.
Next month, very hard. So we're proceeding, all, dot dollars crossing the Ts, getting up to date. We'll, we'll push that out, and, and we've been working on that. up to date, we'll, we'll push that out, and, and we've been working on that for a little while, which is good, to get it perfect, so. Also, the last thing, that we had a meeting with the, hosted by the USDA, the USDA, with the DEP in the room, and also our CCUA, to talk about sewer and water projects, instead of piecemeal our sewer and water like they normally do, taking this area, then we got to convince them, it takes years to go through it, we approached the DEP about looking at, there is a problem with this county, it's been a problem since we had a report from nineteen ninety-three that identified with a problem there, so over, what's that, thirty years, thirty years, I'm going to ask for it, thirty years of talking about the same issue, so we said to the DEP, instead of just taking and looking at one area at a time, could you look at the whole broad area, and they actually listened to it, and they actually said that they would, they want to know who's, who wants to be involved with it, which we're going to proceed, it's one of, one-page thing from the different townships, and they actually said, there'll be areas that we're going to slow things down, but there'll be areas where they can speed it up, and that was, for the DEP to say that was amazing. So to look at our, and we, indeed, at the southern region, even though Greenwich is part of it, the southern region of sewer water, I thought that was great progress, and I, I thank, I think Jay and Selton for putting that together and making it work, and the DEP sat, sitting there and listened to us as we made our pitch to, to look at Cumberland as a whole, and so hopefully, start out, at least maybe it will only take ten, ten years less than normal, but at least we start somewhere with them. So, and actually, I hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving, so, and I guess that's it, do we need a executive session tonight?
No, we don't.
Okay, do I have a motion for a, a German?
Seven.
Seven, all in favor?
Seven twenty-nine.